All right, that's cool. All right, so we're good to go?
Yep.
All right, time being 7:01, I call to order the April 12th, 2022 Franklin School Committee Meeting. Meetings are recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29.
Recording in progress.
As well as recorded by Franklin Matters. Any individual who also wishes to record this meeting must notify the chair. Okay, so going in order on the agenda, we have our pledge student, Kyle Fogarty. He's a grade six student at Annie Sullivan Middle School. Kyle is a sixth grader and is active within the Franklin community. Kyle is a proud member of the Boy Scouts and he is working on earning his Eagle Scout rank. Kyle was the only one in his troop to earn the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, award last year. The Boy Scouts has taught him a lot about himself and so many other things. He likes to camp, be outdoors, participate in Ninja Warrior classes, and play video games. At school, Kyle is kind to his peers and goes out of his way to help people feel included. We are proud of Kyle and look forward to supporting his leadership skills grow over the next few years. So if we could all stand and Kyle will lead us in the pledge. All right, go ahead, Kyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Now, as is customary, we will pause for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. And Kyle, you're free to go. I know that you said you had some Eagle Scout business, so if you have to go, you can feel free to go. All right, next on the agenda, review of agenda. Agenda looks okay to everyone? Everyone, okay? Payment of bills. I've taken a look, they're taken care of. Payroll, Ms. Stokes?
I saw payroll, it's in order.
Okay. Next, we have Franklin High School student reps.
We're gonna promote Mackenzie.
Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can. Hi, Mackenzie.
Hello. I don't know if the art, like, video works at all, but that's okay, because I'll just talk.
Okay.
Um, so I have a long list of things, but, um, starting off, we had, have had a very successful past couple weeks. Um, as far as performing arts goes, uh, our band and chorus went to MICA two weeks ago, um, on April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Uh, chorus won silver, band, um, won silver and gold in various ensembles. And then, um, our Franklin High School Theater Company hosted and won the METG Drama Festival Regionals Competition and is now recognized as one of the top 14 high school theater programs in the state, along with various other individual awards for acting, costuming, um, lighting, set design, all of that jazz. So, um, that was a huge honor and a big weekend, because all of that happened in one weekend. So it was super awesome. Um, as far as Class of 2022 goes, our senior banquet was now two Fridays ago, and it was a huge success and super fun. A lot of kids were saying to me that it was like their favorite dance of all of high schools, so we were super happy about that. I stayed the whole time and then had theater the next day at 7:00 a.m., and it was definitely worth it. Um, we also have our senior T-shirts, which are on sale via a custom ink fundraiser, and the link can be found on our Twitter or in our Instagram bio. Uh, our Instagram is FHS underscore 2022. Uh, along with that, on our Instagram, a lot of seniors have beginning to commit, have been beginning to commit to their colleges, announcing, um, their post graduate, graduation plans. So if you follow our Instagram, um, you can stay updated with all of our seniors' future plans. Um, yeah, that's it as far as 2022 goes. Um, la- last week, we, uh, the Peer Leadership Club at Franklin, at the high school, we hosted our 23rd Annual Peace Takes Practice Conference, um, which was held last Wednesday, and it included speakers such as Numbay Noy, Kobe Frangillo, the Safe Coalition, Jamil Adams, and many others. Um, and students were invited based on their leadership in clubs, uh, showing leadership in classes or on sports teams. Um, and we just spent a whole day, um, working in seminars and just learning a bunch of different things about how we can teach peace and practice peace. So it was a super awesome event. We actually went to the old Charter School to do it, um, which was silly, because there was nothing left there, so we had to put everything back in and then take everything back out. So it was definitely interesting, but it was successful, so. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the 2023 as well, because unfortunately, Robin and Shaw were unavailable to come. Uh, but, so for Class of 2023, their prom tickets are on sale until April 14th, which is in two days, I think. Yep, two days, so kids gotta get those tickets, or else they can't go. Um, they'll, they were emailed with necessary links, and then they can also be found on Blue Classroom Twitter and Instagram. After tickets are bought, pop, prom contracts must be completed also by April 14th, so buy your ticket, fill out the contract, all at once. Um, and the theme is Ancient Greece, and it will be on May 6th at Lombardo's. Uh, as far as sports go, uh, spring sports have started and all the teams are doing well. Uh, we were undefeated in all of our sports on the opening day with boys and girls lacrosse winning by 20 goals each. Science night, uh, Family Science Night, uh, for Science NHS is tomorrow, April 13th, and all ages are welcome. Not sure what times it starts, but I believe it's at 12:00, um, and I'm not sure when it ends. Uh, Empty Bowls is getting ready for their annual, uh, Empty Bowls fundraiser, which will be on May 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and admission is $20, and all proceeds will go to the Franklin Food Pantry. National Honor Society will be hosting a Night of the Arts on April 29th. It's free admission and it's from 5:30 to 7:30. Middle School, just because I know what's going on a little bit with the middle schoolers. Um, Annie Junior rehearsals have begun, and we have a huge group of kids who are participating as actors, actresses, and technicians, and their performances will be on May 13th and 14th. Uh, and lastly, we have Spirit Week, which is this week. Uh, we just had Decades Day, and if you guys could see me, you would see that I'm wearing, um, some sparkly bell-bottom pants, and so everyone had super, a lot of fun with that. Tomorrow is College Day, so even more exciting for the seniors to promote their colleges that they're going to. Um, and then on Thursday, April 14th, which is our last day before spring break, we will be, all be wearing Carolina blue in support of Nick Gaspar. Um, and with that, we will be having a pep rally, which will include fun games for students to participate in, and student versus, in a student versus teacher basketball game. And that is it.
That's, that was a lot.
Lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, that was a lot. I think you, I think you covered it all.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Mackenzie. That was great.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Hearn, Superintendent's Report.
Sure, I have a few things for you and the community this evening. Um, the first is, I want to share a big congratulations and kudos to Ms. Paula Morano, Director of Student Services, uh, and our Assistant Directors Ellen White and Jennifer Gravline, uh, for their contributions to the tiered focused monitoring review in the area of special education, uh, that was completed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education during the week of March 28th. I also wish to extend a big congratulations and kudos to Ms. Michelle Kingsland Smith, who serves as our ELL Director, and our ESL Department for their efforts in the review process towards ESL programming in the district. And for those of you familiar with the tiered focus monitoring review, you know that there is a tremendous amount of work that goes, uh, into, uh, providing the Department of Education with all sorts of documents and reports and policies ahead of time, and then hosting a, a visiting team from the Department of Education as they look through student records, they talk to faculty and staff and families, and ultimately, they're, um, here in the district, uh, looking for, uh, compliance with federal and state special education and civil rights regulations, as well as compliance with ESL regulations. It's a process that occurs every three years. I have the pleasure of sitting down, uh, at the end, uh, for an exit interview with the evaluator who comes to look at special education, and I don't think I have the liberty to, um, fully disclose all that they share, because there is a final report due to the school committee, uh, within 60 days of their visit. But I will say that there were many, many accolades and commendations, um, particularly around establishing a welcoming and conducive environment, having an asset-based mindset, uh, being student-centered. I think all of those things that you would be very, very proud to hear, uh, as school committee members, I was very proud to hear. As a superintendent, uh, it's like our core values, um, in, in live action, uh, to hear what the, uh, what the evaluator had said. Uh, so I just want to, um, really commend our Student Services Department in particular for a great tiered focused monitoring review visit, and, um, the report will be issued in about 60 days. The school committee chair is copied on it, and, um, uh, again, thank you to Paula, Ellen, and Jen, as well as Michelle and the ESL Department. Um, the, uh, COVID testing program through the Department of Education, um, was announced this week that it is going to be extended past April 22nd. Initially, the testing for COVID, um, from the Department of Education was through April, yeah, April break, uh, but I think in anticipation or in response to, uh, you know, some potential uptick in numbers, uh, they are going to continue, uh, wisdom statewide testing options being provided to districts. I do anticipate that funding to end, and we have been kind of alerted that probably at the end of this year, the department will no longer support funding, funding testing programs, and they're making some recommendations to districts to be sure to have things on hand. Um, and we've been having some conversations internally about that. We are very well stocked in masks, uh, in particular, um, but may need to think about, um, purchasing tests, uh, next year, um, for the district, um, because they do expire. Really, some exciting news coming out of the Office of Teaching and Learning. Dr. Tina Rogers has secured, uh, yet another grant for the district. You may recall last year that she secured a grant for the illustrative math implementation, and, um, she has applied for and received, uh, three grants, one for each middle school, uh, from Boston College. The funding is, uh, from the One Eight Foundation, and it totals $122,800. This grant will support all three middle schools as they implement a high-quality, research-based middle school science curriculum called Open SciEd. Uh, the funding will also provide teachers with professional learning over the next three years in terms of its implementation. Open SciEd uses a storyline approach, which is a logical sequence of lessons that are driven by questions students ask as they interact and investigate phenomena. Phenomena are observable events that occur in the universe, and we can use our science knowledge to explain or predict. Anchoring learning and explaining phenomena shifts the focus from learning about science to figuring out why or how something scientific happens. The Rowdy Unit in Open SciEd, um, students build general science ideas in the context of their application, um, to understanding phenomena in a real world, leading to deeper, more transferable knowledge. We're one of the communities to receive this grant, um, but it's more than just, uh, it more than, more's gone into it than just applying for the funds. Uh, there is a science committee with 13 members, including classroom educators, special educators, and administrators, working through the process since January to consider materials. Um, we knew that STEM Scopes was expiring, um, and so, uh, the committee has used current research guidance from the Department of Education, our Portrait of a Graduate. They have written a middle school science instructional vision statement, and they use this to guide the committee as they reviewed, piloted, and evaluated two high-quality science curriculum resources. They have recommended Open SciEd. I have sat in on some of their work this year, and it's been astounding. They have visited, uh, other districts to see, uh, the curriculum in action, and they've really done some excellent work. So we're really, um, uh, pleased with the direction that that is going, and, uh, unfortunately, Mike Procasini, Assistant Principal at Annie Sullivan, left, uh, who was here earlier, but he has been instrumental from a building leadership standpoint, uh, as a, as a committee member. And then, one other big thing that's going on, I think the committee is aware, I've been keeping you informed through, uh, communications, but I think it's important to also elevate this with the community, um, which is that we have, um, something called Mood Check Franklin going on, which is a depression prevention initiative, uh, supported by the Franklin Public Schools and directed by Dr. Tracy Gladstone, a licensed clinical psychologist from the Wellesley Centers for Women at Wellesley College. It's a comprehensive depression screening program that is serving Franklin students in grades eight and 10 and their families, uh, providing education about the problem of youth depression, identifying and referring adolescents in need of mental health services, and providing follow-up with students, parents, and guardians. Uh, Dr. Gladstone presented to faculty and staff last Wednesday, middle school and high school faculty and staff. I thought it was a really informative, uh, presentation, sharing some, um, background knowledge in terms of the incidence of depression and anxiety among youth, uh, risk factors, uh, signs to look for, um, and was, was really, really valuable. There were some nice one-page takeaways, uh, that people could take with them, uh, because the faculty and staff in our buildings are really kind of a first line of defense, uh, in terms of, uh, mental health first aid. Uh, screening began this week at the Horace Mann Middle School yesterday. Approximately one in every four to five children suffers from a mental health condition that will result in severe impairment, and about, uh, 10.8% of adolescents experience significant depressive symptoms at any given time. The initiative consists of two components. Uh, they deliver the signs of suicide educational curriculum to students during a class period, and then following that, they screen all eighth and 10th grade students for symptoms of both depression and anxiety using Qualtrics, a HIPAA-compliant web-based survey tool that students use on their Chromebooks. Then, following that, during the school day, uh, Dr. Gladstone or a trained member of her team reaches out to students who score above a designated threshold on either screening measure, indicate safety concerns, report past depression, or indicate that they wish to talk. During individual conversations with these students, a clinician further screens the teens for current or past depression and/or anxiety after discussing confidentiality. Parents and guardians are contacted following those individual meetings, and the outcomes of the screening are not shared with any school personnel unless the parent and guardian wishes, unless immediate safety concerns are revealed. Uh, screening is optional. Uh, parents and guardians can opt their child out, uh, and students also have the opportunity to opt out in the moment of, uh, at the time the screening is delivered. It complements our grade seven and grade nine screening that we do through our wellness curriculum. That is a collaboration between our wellness teachers and our guidance counselors. Uh, but when this opportunity presented itself, um, in consultation with Heather McVeigh, Director of Guidance, Kristin Latander-Smith, Director of Wellness, Ms. Morano, Mr. Jagir, as well as the principals, we had discussed, uh, providing this opportunity in particular for grades eight and 10, as, uh, they would have had a disrupted health curriculum last year, so we felt that it was important to, uh, make sure that they had the opportunity to experience, uh, this curriculum. Um, it is something that we would, uh, hope to continue, uh, in the future, um, and, uh, it is getting underway now at the first school at Horace Mann. And in the Superintendent's Report, um, I think some of the resources that are here would be generally helpful. Um, this was shared with families of eighth graders and 10th graders, but I think we can make it more broadly available to families, um, across the district. There's, uh, some, some really good resources, uh, that she shared in her letter. And then, uh, lastly, just to, uh, I had some music accolades, uh, that Mackenzie, uh, Mackenzie talked about, so I'll skip those. Uh, we're so proud, there's so many great things happening in the district. Um, I'll just clarify, Science Night is tomorrow night from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Franklin High School, and I also want to wish everybody, uh, a happy spring break. Um, we have no school next week, uh, starting on Monday, uh, which I think is the 18th. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Camille? Dave?
Just, uh, yeah, thank you very much. This is like the most like upbeat, uh, tons of great news, uh, Superintendent's Report, uh, through and through. Uh, so a huge, I just want to, you know, uh, congratulations, uh, and, uh, please also to, uh, give a big thank you, uh, to Dr. Rogers, uh, for all the work securing the grant. That's fantastic, uh, and what a great opportunity it's going to be for the district.
Kate?
Thank you so much for all these updates. Um, yeah, the Mood Check Franklin, it sounds like it's going to be, uh, just a fantastic program, so we're excited to hear about that. Thank you.
Elise? Megan?
Yeah, thank you, and it sounds like a lot of nice, good news.
Congratulations, Paula. Please let Ellen and Jen know that we also send our congratulations.
I will, thank you.
Camille, did you have something?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to, um, praise Tracy Gladstone, and NADIC we've used, I think, three or four years we've used. We call it something else, but... I'm too loud?
Yeah.
I didn't, sorry, sorry. And, uh, it's just done in such a professional way, in a private way, um, it's been useful to, uh, find kids, um, who might otherwise have slipped through the cracks, um, and just to assure parents that the way that the curriculum's delivered, and then the kids take the Qualx, and then the way that they're pulled out of the classroom, it's very subtle, and, um, her, her staff is just so professional, and it's a wonderful, I'm so glad it's here in Franklin.
All right, thank you. All right, moving right along, Dr. Hearn, guest presentations?
Sure, so, um, we have put in your packet a revised, uh, presentation for the Superintendent's Recommended Budget. Um, the packet materials are posted online. Um, we have also put the materials in, um, the budget area of our website, and then printed copies were provided to the committee this evening for your budget books. I was not going to present, so to speak, because many of the, uh, slides are redundant or exactly the same as they had been before. There is an accompanying memo in the, um, in the packet related to what is coming before you tonight for an FY23 budget. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, the Budget Subcommittee met with me and Miriam, and, um, following the discussion at the budget hearing and the question in particular about whether or not we have enough and the right staff members at Keller Elementary School, um, Miriam and I had a conversation that we then, um, presented to the Budget Subcommittee, which was, um, was that, um, based on some adjustments that we felt that could be made in, um, a particular line item, uh, that we could, um, reallocate some funds, uh, to support an additional staff member at Keller. Um, so, um, on the slides, um, we have added in the new kind of initiative area or strategic investments, um, an assistant principal, um, not necessarily, this proposal does not have a full year, it would be a partial year, assistant principal who works some additional days in the summer, but not the entire summer, uh, estimated at about $100,000, uh, to support Keller Elementary School. This is something that, um, kind of augments some additional teaching staff that have been, uh, introduced to the building this year. We have an additional class section for grade three next year planned. We have an additional special educator that we, um, have at the building this year based on student needs. Um, as you know, this proposal, uh, of the FY23 budget includes the literacy, additional literacy specialist and an additional English language educator, and, uh, we've added some paraprofessionals. One of our challenges, um, you know, the numbers on paper, uh, don't portray exactly what the reality is in our schools right now. We have vacancies particularly for paraprofessionals, um, a- across all of our buildings. And so I shared with you, um, some background information related to this ad. It does not change the bottom line of the FY23 budget. Um, it is, the FY23 budget, uh, at this point, um, comes to you as a revised Superintendent's Recommended Budget of $70,216,996. That, um, bottom line number remains the same, uh, a 3.53% increase over FY22. And, uh, I would suggest, uh, approving the, the budget. Ultimately, the budget vote is you're, you're voting on a bottom line. Uh, budget transfers, uh, sometimes, um, and do happen, um, that you've seen over the course of a year. I'm advocating for an assistant principal, uh, as I feel like, uh, if one position could have an immediate effect, it would be this, uh, because this position would be far-reaching in terms of every single staff member, every single student in the building, uh, providing support for evaluation, uh, attention to student behaviors, uh, parent and guardian communication, and day-to-day operational support. Uh, in order to support this, the, um, funds have been reallocated from the healthcare line. Uh, we had some favorable news, and Miriam may jump in, uh, to talk a little bit about that, but we had some favorable news in terms of, uh, health insurance rates.
Yeah, so our Insurance Advisory Council has been, um, looking at, um, different rates, uh, and shifting, um, the plan to a strategic, uh, group, and they're going to meet, uh, on Thursday to discuss this, uh, further, uh, but we think at this point in time that the rate structure, uh, would be more favorable for us to about a 5% increase, um, versus the 8% that we had budgeted, uh, so that's where we were able to reduce, uh, the budget to account for the additional position, uh, for the assistant principal.
Are there any questions about that? Camille?
Dave?
Not about the health insurance, um, uh, transportation. I know at one point that was kind of like a questionable, has that started to narrow down at all, where we have a better idea about what those costs will be?
I think that's going to be pretty well set right now. Um, our Big Yolus contract is finalized, our, uh, our in-district transportation is, is finalized with our van drivers, and our out-of-district transportation, um, fluctuates based on our population, but, um, uh, we're still waiting for, for a final answer on that. We haven't, um, tied it down. I don't anticipate that it's going to be a large increase. I don't anticipate that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. I s- I noticed that Al, Mr. Al Charles, committee member, has joined. I know, um, I had indicated he'd be joining. There he is. So Al, we were just doing the, um, guest presentations, budget update from Dr. Hearn and Miriam, if you had any questions?
Uh, no questions. Thank you, sorry for being late.
No, it's fine.
I'm good, thank you.
Dave?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Um, I'm wondering what's the difference between the 5% and the 8%, because I remember the healthcare costs were large.
Yeah, it, it's about $137,000, um, at this point, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. So where's that other 37?
So right now, that $37,000 is currently sitting in the health insurance account. Um, you know, there's always fluctuation with health and healthcare based on people who come on the plan, come off the plan, because of qualifying events, or, um, um, open enrollment. Uh, we're hoping that, to see that go down, but that's, that's kind of where we are right now.
Gotcha, so that could be an example of where they're, we're voting on the bottom line tonight, but in the future, say in November, March of next year, there could be a budget transfer that comes across our desk here, that's $37,000 from healthcare to, you know, some unexpected need that we don't know we need right now, um, but sort of presents itself mid-year.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's my only question.
Hi, guys.
Thanks.
Um, no questions.
All right. I think we're good.
Okay. So with that, um, I would just add that, um, at last week's budget update to Town Council, the town administrator, um, had indicated support of an increased allocation of $2,396,171. I'm not sure if he said it exactly that same way, but, uh, indicated, uh, support for the increased percentage of the school department's budget, um, so anticipating that to be folded in when he does his formal budget presentation, uh, and, uh, so I was able, am able to share that with you, um, based on the update that he gave last, last week. Um, and so with that, I would recommend, um, that the school committee approve the FY23 budget in the amount of $70,216,996.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, discussion, questions? Camille? Dave? Al? Nope? Dave?
Just like to say thank you all, again, so much for all the hard work you've done, I really appreciate it. Uh, Dr. Hearn, Miriam, this, over the past month of answering questions in Budget Subcommittee, you've quickly become my favorite. you've quickly become my favorite person, so. So yeah, just thank you all again, the entire administrative team, for all the hard work that's put into this. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And just to echo that, and also, you know, we've, for those just tuning in tonight, we've had a number of opportunities to ask you questions and go back and forth about this budget. So there are no surprises in here for us. And as you said, we're voting on the bottom line number at this point. And then if there's transfers that happen mid-year, that all comes across our desk. And so that just helps me remember this part of the process. So much appreciated.
Megan?
Yeah, it's, yeah, no questions.
All right, so seeing none, but we'll come on motion. We'll do a roll call vote. Camille Bernstein? Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yes.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Denise Spencer, yes. All right, motion carries. All right, Dr. Hearn?
Great, thank you. So the next item in your packet is related to school choice. School choice is a law that allows students who reside in one municipality to attend the schools in another municipality unless the school committee in that other municipality votes not to accept school choice students. In Franklin, we have a history of accepting school choice students up until recent times. So our last school choice student graduated in 2020. And that was because, you know, 12 or 13 years prior, the district had been accepting school choice students into, into our community. There is a history of school choice in your packet dating back to 2003, where you have some historical data in terms of applications and how many were accepted. So for example, in 2007, 2008, there was a high of 74 people applying to the district with 39 students being accepted into the district through the school choice program. And a low at that time of 28 applying with 17 accepted. The lowest acceptance was in 2005, 2006 with nine, among the records that you have in front of you here. School choice is something that, it's kind of a big policy question. It does have some financial ramifications for the district. We do have students who school choice out of Franklin. The number is small. The number of students who school choice to other communities is small. School choice students have $5,000 from the municipality that follows them to their new school, their new school community. That is often misinterpreted. Oftentimes, people think, well, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Why would I want to do school choice? If the student carries 5,000 with them and the per pupil cost is 14,000, I'm actually losing money. But it's a little bit of a misunderstanding in that if you have a classroom of 15 students and a teacher at 70,000, you're paying that teacher 70,000 whether you have 15 students, 16 students, or 18 students. And so any school choice student you add incrementally supports your budget towards a fixed cost. It doesn't have, it does have some risks, and you have to be kind of careful and thoughtful in terms of planning for it. And once you commit to accepting a school choice student, you're, and you accept that student, you are committing to that student through high school. I have been reluctant to recommend that the school committee accept school choice in recent years. And you'll see here, was not built into, and no assumptions were built into your budget. And, and it, it's not recommended this evening. But every year, I do wonder at some point if it's something that the Franklin School Committee might want to consider, given the declining enrollment and the ability to commit to students who, in the middle school and high school, now that the enrollment decreases, are finding their way to the, to the later grades. So my recommendation at this point is to not accept school choice students for the 2223 school year, but continue to study it, perhaps studying it as part of the space needs enrollment component of the space needs Subcommittee and Sub, Subcommittee. I think it's a variable that, timing-wise, might, you might not want to introduce until you sort that out. But at some point, school choice may be something that you, that you wish to do. Every year, we get calls and emails from people in neighboring communities or faculty and staff who are wondering if we accept school choice. So that's my recommendation this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is there a motion to not accept school choice students for the 2022, 2023 school year as discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion questions? Camille? Dave Callahan?
Yeah, thank you. So one question, when you mentioned, once you commit to a student, you're committing to them through high school, is that like a moral commitment or a legal commitment?
It's a legal one.
Okay. Because it's, yeah, this is a conversation that we had at the Budget Subcommittee, and it was, it was great because it definitely opens up some extra sources of revenue. And I, I do appreciate the timing of it. And I would love to, if we could, you know, continue to have that discussion as we're looking to, looking forward to how the lower numbers that we have in our schools are, you know, going to shape our, our district. But I think it is something that will be fantastic in the future. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that.
Al?
So thank you. So definitely appreciate the suggestion that we fold this into the space needs discussion. I think that makes sense, given our numbers. And I'm not sure if you know this offhand, but for the, historically, do we know where these families have come from? Like, were they Franklin residents that had moved to another town and wanted, have their children go to Franklin schools still? Or like, do we know what was the driver for the?
I don't know the driver historically. In addition to people from other communities reaching out to us or faculty and staff, we do have people who move out of Franklin who want to keep their children in the schools. And your enrollment policy wouldn't permit that. So the tricky part with school choice is that you open up a certain number of seats, and then there's a lottery. So that can be difficult depending upon the timing in which that family moves out of town. But I, I would imagine that some of the school choice students from the past had previously resided in Franklin and wanted to stay.
Thank you.
Lucas may have some detail to add to that.
Just that, I would just reiterate what Dr. Hearn said, that some students stay and move locally. I know as a former principal who participated in school choice in a neighboring town, there was often applications from, from local areas regarding, just for transportation purposes. School choice needs to make sense to families in a lot of ways as well. But I'm glad you mentioned the selection process is based on the number of seats you have. And if you exceed the number of seats, it's expected that it's random that you select. So you can't necessarily try to prioritize previous residents. If you exceed the number already, it has to be lottery.
Thank you. And then I guess the other question, I know you've mentioned that the number of students that go to do school choice for other towns and leave Franklin is small. But do we know what the drivers are for that?
I think they could be varied depending upon, I think there's lots of different reasons. I, I, we haven't done a survey or anything in that regard to find out. I think it's varied.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Dave, thank you.
Thank you. So, quick question. So I know you mentioned it's a, school choice brings in 5,000 per pupil. But do we have any maybe estimates of total revenue based on past participation or future enrollment projections, or in terms of like the total amount? Or is that just too premature to estimate at this point?
Yeah, so I don't have any projections for future. Past amounts have been large over the course of the year. So if we had, you know, 70 kids, we'd be getting $5,000 per pupil in that year. And, and we file a choice report every year based on the number of pupils that are, are coming into our district. And we confirm that. Obviously, as Dr. Hearn said, there aren't any at this point in time. But each year, while we accepted choice students, the Department of Ed would, would require a filing to confirm that. And that's where the revenue would, would come from.
We don't have a ton of data presented to you. It goes back about 20 years. But in 2007, 2008, we had 76 students. So at 5,000, that would approximate 400,000 in revenue, which goes into a revolving fund that can be, unlike some of your other revolving funds, which are very narrow, the school choice revolving fund is a pretty broad applicability to how it can be spent.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, so if, if a district decides to be, you know, is open to school choice, would they have a certain amount of seats at elementary, a certain amount of seats at middle, a certain amount of seats at high?
Yep.
And it's, the, the school committee would decide how many seats at what level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and based on my experience, and I think many districts have school choice begin at the elementary. So the students are kind of experiencing that same, like, vertical curriculum through, through K to 12, pre-K to 12. K to 12, you can't do school choice pre-K.
Usually recommended by, by seats available and then approved through school committee as well, like, as that process. So now talking about whether or not you participate in the program. But in the summer, based on schedules and kind of finalizing, getting more, more information about how many students are enrolled in sections is when you can start to get more clear on, on what your available seats are.
That makes sense. And I would-
Varied by grade.
Right. So it could be specific, you know, fourth grade, this many seats?
Yes.
Third grade, this, I see.
At this particular school.
Gotcha. So very specific.
Very, very specific.
Okay. So that makes sense as far as the space needs Subcommittee goes. You know, we're watching the enrollment, and at a certain point, if there's redistricting, we're going to sort of, everything's going, the justice is going to settle, and we're going to have an understanding of how many seats at this school in this grade might be open. Okay.
Exactly, exactly. And I think, oh, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have another question, if you want a distraction. So how does this work with students with disabilities? Is there like some kind of confidentiality as they're applying? Or is it, are they sending packets?
Students with disabilities can apply and would be expected to be accepted into the district.
I see. So is it like they send a packet, like they would?
I don't think it's like, not like an out-of-district placement or anything like that. It's, it, yeah, it, it's kind of like they're put into the, they enroll into the group in a lottery. And the, the student services would follow, you know, we would be responsible for student services for them.
Gotcha. So that could theoretically, if you build it, they will come?
Yes, that is-
Right, as far as specialized programs go?
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
Yep. And I think that reminds me of what I was going to say, which is that, you know, it's, it's both a technical and kind of an adaptive policy question. So technically, we've got X number of seats, and we could accept students into this school. But I think that there's probably like a, some groundwork to be laid and a foundation to be laid in terms of the more adaptive cultural components to it. And especially since it's been so long, since school choice students have been, have been in the district. So that's just something maybe as you, if you're thinking about it and considering it, thinking about kind of having that like community conversation, both with families and then also with faculty and staff and administrators too.
Right, and like the school climate, school culture and climate piece, really?
Yeah.
As far as accepting new people?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Interesting. Thanks.
Megan?
Yeah, it sounds interesting. Yeah, I'd, yeah, consider it for, you know, whatever year it might, you know, make sense. I don't have any questions.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so vote will come on the motion. We'll do a roll call vote. Camille?
I don't really know what to say because it's a negative.
Yes. So it's, I, so we-
I say yes. Okay.
To say yes, to not accept school choice students.
So then I'm saying yes. Okay.
Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yes.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Denise Spencer, yes. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Dr. Hearn?
Great, thank you. In your packet is a revised 2223 school calendar. So back in February, maybe, you adopted an initial school calendar that set the start date, the end date, and the major breaks and holidays during the school year. And we said we wanted to come back to you with the professional development and early release days and parent conference half-days. So in consultation with our administrative team, we also share the draft contract with FBA leadership and have a discussion and conversation with them about the placement of days. We present to you this 2223 school calendar. We have included 14 early release days in the proposed calendar. It is an increase from previous years, and we're advocating for this increase to provide additional time for professional development as well as educator collaboration, given the responsibilities involved in implementing initiatives of the district and school improvement plans. That includes things like data analysis of the NWEA MAP test. It could also include some of the things you heard tonight, like the implementation of the, the science curriculum, educator evaluation, and other things that teachers are attending to. The calendar is also inclusive of additional time for spring conferences. This year, we returned elementary conferences for families in March. And this calendar proposes also having March conferences for the middle school that the middle school principals are advocating for. Most of the early release days are on Fridays, although you'll see several are on Wednesdays. I think there's three over the course of the year. On Wednesdays, those would back up against a faculty meeting, providing additional concentrated time for faculty and staff to work together. And lastly, time on learning has been carefully reviewed and carefully looked at. Linda Ashley and Tina Rogers put this together and reviewed time on learning at all of the levels. And this does maintain that expectated, expected, the expectation of time on learning of 900 hours for elementary and 990 for secondary. And so we're happy to answer any questions that you have. It would be my recommendation that you adopt this calendar for the 2223 school year.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the revised 2022, 2023 school calendar as discussed? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion questions? Camille?
I'd actually like to propose an amendment that we change the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay, so-
I, I forget how to phrase it. I move-
We have a motion to amend the motion to adopt the revised school calendar to replace Indigenous Peoples' Day.
No, Columbus-
No, to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Okay, is, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. So we will vote on the amended-
Do we have a discussion first?
Do we have, do we have a discussion first? This is my first time doing this.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would suggest a discussion or, yeah, if anybody wants to discuss there.
I know that we have a DEI committee that's going to look at, with collaboration of parents and faith leaders for other holidays. But this one doesn't add a day. It just updates the language to reflect appropriate acknowledgement of the holiday. And I'd like to report that there are two bills in the state legislature, H3191 and S2027. And according to the website, this Friday, they're up for reports. And they've already had a hearing last fall, and they're up for a report. And I'd also like to read from a WBUR article from last September where it, it talked about the support that Italian-Americans have for Indigenous Day. So if, if I could, I'd just like to read a paragraph. Heather Lavelle, who co-founded Italian-Americans for Indigenous Peoples' Day, said her group emphasized, sorry, empathizes with the feelings of Italian-Americans who view the day as a symbol of their ancestors overcoming adversity. The holiday has been celebrated unofficially since 1792, but it was official, officially a federal holiday in 1937, from my research. Lavelle, a Bedford resident, says, "But things are much different for us today. Our culture is celebrated, especially throughout October, which is officially recognized as Italian-American Heritage Month in the Commonwealth. We enjoy a level of status and recognition in society that native people do not. And we have a responsibility to use that platform we now have to ensure we are not repeating the same patterns of abuse that our ancestors endured." So what she's saying is that she's acknowledging that the holiday was enacted at first by Italian-Americans who felt discriminated against in the early part of the 20th century. However, once you attain a- attain a status of not being oppressed in that way anymore, then it's my thought, and her thought too, that it's her obligation to help elevate other people. So I stand with her and support changing it to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I'm hoping that that report from the legislature will make it a state change as well. Thank you.
Dave Callahan?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Al Charles?
Uh, no, no comments. Actually, I'm sorry, I do have a comment. Not regarding the, the amendment, or should I hold on if not regarding the amendment, or should I, am I good to go?
Uh, a question on what?
So regarding kindergarten placement, I know we, we talked about it the last time, I, I don't recall exactly what was the, the response in terms of what would be the first day of kindergarten, and when would that be placed on the calendar?
I think that's a fair question, because if you were to vote, you'd be voting on an amended calendar.
On the whole calendar, right.
And so I think it's a fair question to ask and have a conversation about other things in addition to what the amendment is. We have not yet set when the first day of kindergarten would be, that is a, a conversation that we typically have with the FEA leadership after we determine the case screening process. Typically kindergarten starts a few days after the first day of students for first through 12.
Great, thank you.
You all set, Al?
Yep, thank you.
Dave?
Um, I guess I just have one question. Yeah, so I'm, I am supportive of the change, I guess my only question and maybe for discussion this, because Columbus Day is October 12 to commemorate the line of Christopher Columbus, yeah, in the, yeah, in the, when he, yeah, well, in the Americas, so I'm just wondering, would there be a more appropriate day to, that's like more appropriate to Indigenous Peoples' culture, that might be better than October 12? I guess that's just my only question. I am supportive of the change, because I don't think it's, I don't see the, I, to your point, Camille, don't see the point in commemorating Christopher Columbus, I'm just, that's just my only question, I don't necessarily have a, an answer to that, I guess I'm just wondering.
Elise?
Okay, so as far as the 14 half-days go, so this year there were 11, sorry?
I think so, that sounds about right.
Okay, so, so as a mom, they make me crazy, as a working mother, but as a professional who works in education, I understand the value of the time for professional development and all these initiatives that we're pushing through, that the staff need time to do this. So I'm just, it's okay for me to have two feelings at once about these half-days. 14 sounds like a lot to me, but I guess having some on Wednesday, some on Friday, sort of will break it up. As far as executive functioning and organization goes, I think it was Dave Callahan or Al who had suggested at one point when we were looking at the calendar, can you please put the start and end times down for half-days for us poor parents that have so many things in our brains and cannot remember what a half-day looks like, 10:40, I think?
Yes.
We text about these things, asking each other, and it's April, and we still don't know. So I know that sounds like such a silly thing, but it's like, would be helpful, you know, these margins are big, can they just move to the side, like formatting somewhere?
Yes, we can, we can definitely do that.
That'd be really, really great. And up in the top, at the very, very top in the header, it says, "Half-days to be added, but the half-days are here," so that will be changed, right, once it's voted on?
Yep.
And again, I'm just, I'm just talking myself through this, so there's one half-day every month, two in October. I do appreciate as a school committee member being updated about the PD times and what's happening, because that just helps me as a mom understand the value and how it's, the value of the half-day, and struggling or, you know, trying to figure out childcare on that half-day, but understanding the value of it, and keeping that at the forefront of my brain as a mom, so I appreciate that. That's it? What? That's okay.
Megan?
Yeah, thanks, Lady Bernstein, for that report that you delivered, but I don't have any questions about the calendar.
So I guess just kind of piggyback off of, oh-
No, 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 if you, I think you were gonna address the same, maybe you're gonna address the same thing with Dave?
Can I, can I talk now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to kind of answer a question of yours, Dave, you know, so Indigenous Peoples in Massachusetts have asked for this change, I talked about this last year, the Massachusetts Center for Native American Awareness has asked for communities to make this change, and I think that as part of our anti-racism work, it's important, and, you know, I agree with Camille that, you know, it's, we're ignorant of the oppression of the Indigenous people, and it's just easy to ignore it. So, there you go. Camille, you got something else?
I was, I was simply gonna say, and for the audience too, in case they are wondering why is there a controversy, it's because Indigenous people feel as though if it's commemorating the quote "discovery" of America, there were already people here, it was already populated, there was rich culture for thousands of years, and so the idea that many of us grew up learning that he discovered America is not quite true, and so then it leaves you with like, what are you really celebrating, that he landed here? Also Indigenous people consider him a colonizer, and a lot of death and destruction came out of that, and when we know better, we do better. So, that's how I understand it.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend and a second, any more discussion questions? I'm looking at Al, he's shaking his head. Dave Callahan, going once? Okay, all right, so roll call vote, Camille Bernstein voting to amend?
Yes, I'm voting to amend.
Okay.
So I think we, just to be clear, you're voting on the calendar as amended?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, voting on the calendar as amended, which means covers everything, including the change on the day, yes, yes, that would be a yes.
Okay. Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yes.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Denise Spencer, yes, all right. All right, the amendment has carried, okay. Okay, Cooperstown Field Trip, Dr. Hearn?
We ended up revising the, since we met to discuss the packet, we put that in consent agenda since it's a recurring trip.
You're right, yes, ignore me. All right, discussion only items, there are none. Information Matters, Superintendent Evaluations, Elise?
Well, yes, we met earlier tonight to review the superintendent evaluation process. We expect to review the superintendent's evidence in May and will complete the final evaluation in June.
Thank you, Elise. Budget, Dave McNeil?
Yes, the Budget Subcommittee met on March 29th, where we discussed the recommended budget adjustment, that was detailed this evening. Members also had opportunities to ask any clarifying questions or follow-up questions from the public hearing, and we do not have another budget meeting scheduled at this time.
When are the town budget meetings, the budget hearings?
So FinCom is gonna be the week of May 9th, we have a regularly scheduled school committee meeting on the 10th, so I think will be sometime later that week, and then the town council budget hearing is, I want to say, May 25th and 26th.
Thank you. Policy, Dave Callahan?
So our April policy meeting had to be postponed, next one we have, it will be on May 3rd.
May 3rd, yay. All right, Community Relations, so an announcement that our legislative forum has been canceled and will hopefully be rescheduling in the near future, I will keep everyone up to date. Space Needs and Facilities Assessment, Al Charles?
Sorry, trying to get off of me here. So we did have our first initial meeting where we talked through just the plan, our initial phases, which was gathering information, we do have our next meeting on the 26th of April, I believe, I'm just double checking, sorry, no, 28th.
Okay, thank you. Joint PCCs?
To Megan, so we, we did not have our meeting today, just due to low attendance, we will be meeting again in, in May, I believe it's the 3rd.
All right, May 3rd. Okay, SWAC, Elise?
At our meeting last week, we discussed some events to share wellness-related information and better engage the community in our work. On our behalf, Lucas has contacted the Franklin Farmers Market about opportunities for a SWAC booth this summer. I'll keep you posted when that and other events are confirmed, we might be going on the road.
I have an update to add.
What's the update, yes?
I received word back from the Farmers Market, we do have a booth that they will set up, we just have to finish the application process, they'll select the dates, and I'm sure we'll have other opportunities to communicate more as we go through the year. It's exciting.
That's really exciting, yes, it's gonna be a good time, and our next SWAC meeting is Tuesday, May 4th.
Do you get to pick which booth you're next to?
I don't know, we have so many questions.
Oh, the cupcake one or the bread one?
The bread one. Big lines there.
Oh my god, now I'm hungry, all right. CPAC, Elise?
So the CPAC is holding a workshop and meeting tomorrow night on Zoom, the workshop starts at 7:00 PM, it's focused on mental health skill building, and the CPAC board meeting will be held afterwards at 8:00 PM. The event is open to the public, and we hope people will take advantage of this free opportunity.
Substance Abuse Tax Force met this meeting, I'm sorry I was unable to attend, so Lucas or Dave, any update?
I'm happy to share an update.
Okay.
We met to debrief the critical conversations that took place earlier this month, and received some really, really solid information from the group. Our plan now is to survey families about some potential topics that could come up, that could serve as future critical conversations, and also we are planning a fall critical conversation that will be in the works, there's a few topics that have risen to the top that may make their way out, so there's more planning to be done, but certainly we had a, we had a productive meeting. Anything to add, Mrs. Maron?
Nope. We'll look forward to another critical conversations in October.
All right, perfect. All right, and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, we meet tomorrow afternoon. All right, so that's all set, Consent Agenda, Dr. Hearn?
I recommend approval of the minutes of the March 22nd, 2022 School Committee Meeting as detailed. I recommend approval of the executive session minutes of the March 22, 2022 School Committee Meeting as detailed. I recommend approval of the request of Miguel Carmo to take DECA students to Atlanta, Georgia for the international competition from April 23rd through 27th, 2022, as detailed. I recommend approval of the request of Ms. Trotier to take the JFK second graders to Roger Williams Park Zoo in Providence, Rhode Island on May 20th, 2022, as detailed. And I recommend approval of the request of Zach Brown to take the FHS baseball players to Cooperstown, New York from April 18th to 19th, 2022, as detailed.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed? So moved, a second?
Second.
Discussion questions, Camille?
If the people need a chaperone for the zoo, I will go, and if not, just go see the giant anteater, please.
That's what I was gonna say, I wanna go so bad. Dave Callahan, anything?
No, this is fantastic.
All right, Al?
No, no questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second, roll call vote, Camille?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is citizens' comments. So are there any citizens in the audience, in person or online, who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda and falls within the committee's purview? If you could come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Carol O'Neill, I live at 11 Colt Road. My grandchildren are not in the schools, my children were in the schools, they're older now, and I worked in the schools. Just to preface what I'm going to say to you is that a few years back, I had a conundrum of sorts, in wherein I was wondering about how ethical our society was. So I decided to take a philosophy ethics course, a summer intensive one, where I just read and did term papers the whole summer, and I came across, you know, interesting things like, I never pronounce this right, unitaritism, it's a philosophy, and the common good. And I used the course, you know, but did I actually learn what I came in there to learn? And it wasn't the professor, he was great, it was me, did I learn what I came in to learn? And so all of these years, I always had this wondering, and then the pandemic came, and I, I still had questions about it, and we had this we and me kind of thing going on. So I was kind of wondering, like, what is this about? Should somebody, you know, say that they want restrictions to be stopped so they can go to the hairdresser? What are we talking about when it comes to all of us? And then last October, my six-year-old granddaughter, I was there in the background while her mother took her in to, to have her shot, her, her COVID shot, and she's standing there, this little girl, and she's shaking, she's shaking, and she didn't want the shot, she was afraid, and then the, the woman who was administering the shot said to her, "You're a hero." And I thought, oh my god, oh my goodness, this is where I'm coming from, I finally recognize what the common good is about, and I intend to speak more about my, this to my grandchildren, and my granddaughter, and my other grandchildren, in that when she was told she was a hero, she stopped shaking, and she took that shot, and what was trying to be said to her is that she was doing this for the common good. And I thought about what you have all done, and you have all done these past couple of years in the school committee before you, in trying to deal with this pandemic, and trying to do things for the better of all of us and our students, and I just want you to know that I thank you. You get criticized all too often, it is a tough, tough thing that you're all doing. It's our schools, and I just want you to know that I appreciate every single one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas, can you ensure that people on Zoom can raise their hand? Just in case anyone on Zoom, I know there's some-
I think they have the capability, I think Al had, had raised his hand, so if anybody wanted to, that's what they would need to do.
Okay. All right, seeing none. All right, new business, Dr. Hearn?
At the next meeting, I believe we are going to have some guests in the guest presentation area from our science fair winners.
Yay!
At your request, so we've got a couple students from the high school coming to share their science fair, science fair projects, and that is, in addition to, you know, other routine matters, we may have field trips, gift acceptances, budget transfers, and the like.
All right, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the April 12th School Committee Meeting. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Camille?
Yes.
Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yes.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Yes, all right, thank you, everyone.
Recording stopped.
Incredible ways, I was wondering if someone might speak to that a little bit?
Well, I know one of the things that we haven't mentioned so far is gambling, huge issue, and a lot of people are affected by it, and just like perhaps the shopping addictions that I've dealt with, gambling has a tremendous economic impact, as does substance use.
People go into debt feeding their habits. And smoking, economic, in addition to the addiction itself.
You know, one of the important things on my recovery journey has been realizing that I I really wasn't trying to compare myself out of the room. I was looking for common things to compare myself into the room. And what I found is that, and I have an obsession of the mind, in my case, my obsession was the codependency with my son. And so that caused me to do all sorts of things that were destructive. Escaping became so paramount in my life that I was missing incredible chunks of time with my family. So whether I was out on a lake fishing alone, or whether I isolated somewhere else, I went to Florida alone, or I overspent, I mean, these were all things that I was driven to do as a result of that obsession of mine. So again, and I was brought back to to myself to think, okay, how am I possibly different? I I don't see the difference. It's a nuance, you know? And so for me, that was central, a central part of my understanding for recovery.
So I I've been, I've been sober from from alcohol and drugs for 11 years. And in early recovery, doing the 12 steps and finding that not only did it save my life, it actually gave me life. I used to tell people who were not alcoholic or not involved in drug addiction that that anybody should be doing the 12 steps. It's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a design for a living that works for anybody. So there was, you know, there's been people in my life, friends, family, acquaintances, that I've, you know, kind of haphazardly shown how how I do the 12 steps and then say, yeah, if you want more information, let me know because I think it could work for anyone and improve their life. And then I got to see firsthand this program, DRA, that actually applies it to literally any kind of unhealthy coping mechanism. And I mean, I have an addictive mind through and through, like, I may have been, I may be sober from alcohol and drugs, you know, for over a decade, but I'm addicted to to collecting movies, I'm addicted to, you know, you name it, caffeine. I'm addicted to, you know, having organized, a hyper-organized life, I'm addicted to, I'm addicted to anything I put my hands on. Luckily, because harm reduction is part of DRA, these are much healthier than than, you know, drinking every single day. So it's, you know, but it's a constant balancing for, I think, anybody, whether you're an addict or not. And only in DRA can I talk about these kinds of things and learn like, oh, how does this relate back to my alcoholic mind, like you said? And I I'll say, I I come from AA, I'm a, I was, I probably would have been one of the anti, don't say addict in AA if if I was born 60 years earlier. But I was also, I I came up in AA at the same time that opiates were becoming more and more prevalent in AA meetings, and I fully supported that to be covered. But I also suffered.